You have other people climbing in so far that you're trying to get in?
No, we've got thirty minutes.
Everybody who has decided to come on tonight, you know, very happy to see that we have a large turnout. Uh, the plan is we're gonna get through a couple of things. And then we're gonna get to the thing that most everybody's here to hear, talk about, which is the reopening plans and have a chance for you guys to say what you want to say. So with that said, why don't we get into this? We'll start with the MOAs.
So I'm, I'm just gonna ask everybody if you are not part of the board or a member from the senior leadership team. If you could remain muted throughout the presentation, we are recording it and we are also going to have anything that's put in the chat function will be collected so that it can be part of the, uh, the minutes for everyone to, to see. So when we open it up for the public, um, all your comments will go through the chat function uh, that Mr. Hayward will be able to get to when we go to public input, but remaining on mute would be huge for this meeting so that we're not talking over one another or we're hearing, you know, what can be distractions and, and households. So thank you very much. The MOA Tom, um, had been brought up at a previous meeting. It was for you, for the board to decide if they were comfortable with Dr. Ryan and Dr. Campbell continuing to do that negotiations, or if there was a member or members of the board, uh, for new fields who, um, was going to take on that specific note negotiations. If Dr. Campbell and Dr. Ryan continue to do it allowed for it to move a little bit more quickly and smoother with the ten different organizations that they're, they're having to negotiate with. However, it can be a, a board decision as well. And so that, that was one of the agenda items that we had to tackle. And if Dr. Campbell jumps on here, um, I'd be glad for him to get any more input on letting you know where they are. With the, with the process that had already been approved at the joint board meeting back on July twentieth.
Is Tom on? I can't tell on all this.
I'm, I'm looking through, I don't see him yet. We're, uh, we're double booked tonight, so Stratum board is going on right now as well. So, um, or else you'd have the full senior leadership team. So we've had to, uh, divide and, and be able to make both meetings and, and provide input. So I'd, I'd use these certain numbers, but I don't see Tom on yet.
Okay. So here's, I guess here's my first question. Is the plan to involve the boards or not involve the boards? What's the overall suggestion?
Uh, it, it's really up to each board to, they were supposed to think about it. I know, uh, this, we've talked to every boards, uh, to this point. You know, certain boards have said, please continue the negotiations, uh, through Dr. Ryan and, and Dr. Campbell to make it smoother, uh, more efficient, more effective. Um, so that has already been, um, the process through two of the boards that have already met and given that, um, ability to meet that way. Again, Stratton's meeting now, uh, and then Exeter meets next week. Um, so they haven't made that decision yet. And Brentwood on Monday was still, still looking at that as they've got another meeting scheduled for Monday to, and that is on the agenda item.
Gotcha. Okay. What do you guys think about putting a representative there or letting David and company take care of it?
It would be nice to be able to talk to Tom first about that, just to get a few more details, but.
So we could table this until Dr. Campbell gets on. If you'd like, we could move this down in the agenda and even be something after the, the, the public input section if that. Because I think he's the best, best person to speak for it, as I've not been in part of those negotiation discussions.
All right. I'm fine with pushing. And then, you know, that, that would be fine because it would get us to what we gotta get to the most important part anyways, and then we can take care of that later if Tom comes on.
That's exactly.
Is that cool with you?
Yeah.
All right. Very good then. Okay. Next up, uh, oh yeah, the telehealth contract renewal.
Yes, we have it in your packet, um, for a, um, for it to continue through June twenty twenty-two. Obviously, you know, um, most of healthcare right now is, um, is having to be seen or was being seen through telehealth. So it shows you how important it was, not just for new fields, but all of our communities. You know, it's obviously lax and, you know, more in person, but it was something that, um, we wanted to discuss because New Fields Elementary School was that kind of pilot site for, for, for elementary schools. And if it was something that you wanted to continue a partnership with, um, and that is why that's included in your, your packet tonight. And if you agree upon it, Tom, I can either send it to you for your signature because we need the board chair's signature.
Do we have this budgeted?
There's, there's no cost for us.
Okay. All right. And it just, it's just essentially through twenty twenty-two with no cost to the.
Correct. What we were tracking last year, Jane, and we didn't get to that point was how it would affect, um, our, our school nurse, Ms. Merrick. If we would add additional time or, or take away, unfortunately, after we got all of our, um, contracts and, and our product, product, uh, protocols and procedures in, in order, we, we then were remote. Um, so we never got a chance to even put it under, uh, under a test. So that was our discussion from a year ago of where we're at. And how I think all of us concede how telehealth could be efficient, effective, and even, uh, saving, um, our school district. So, um, but again, we haven't had the chance to see what it would look like in a true school setting and, um, with, with students in school every day.
Yeah. I know Christie's on the call. Does she have an opinion on whether she would like to be able to see this, um, move forward?
Glad to hear from Christie, if Christie, if you're open to talking.
Um, I think absolutely we should go ahead and give it a try. I'm not quite sure how it will work this year, but I mean, I'm up for trying it because we, Kristen Johnson put so much hard work into getting this started. And I think it's, could be very helpful. So I'd be good with it.
All right. Cool.
Sounds good to me then.
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem with it. Do we just make a motion, Chris?
Yes, please make a motion. And since we're Zoom, we do need to have a roll call after that as well.
Okay. I will make a motion to renew the contract with telehealth good through twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Here we are.
And I.
Okay. Then we'll do a roll call. I say yes.
Yes.
Hey, it's unanimous. Tom, would you like me to, uh, send it that way for a signature? Or would you like to come by the office and I can leave it at the main, main desk at the SAU?
Yeah, I'll just come by. It's fine.
Thank you.
Thousand times easier. All right, cool. Next thing is the minutes from our last meeting. I looked through them. I didn't see anything. Did either of you guys pick anything out?
I did. The where was it? In the social sentinel section eight point two. Um, I didn't say that there was any students that were identified. I asked if there were students that were identified and I believe that was the response from, I think that was Helen. Helen may have given me the response.
It was me who gave you the response.
Okay. So we just need to change that briefly. And then in under business and financial section six, uh, most of the way down, it says Mr. Driski recommended considering the students may not be returning in the fall. I think it, it wasn't recommended. It was just, you know, considering to consider that the students wouldn't be returning in the fall. And then I think that was it. Yep. That was all I found.
I didn't see anything else.
Then if that's all we got, uh, make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that I believe takes care of everything we needed. Uh, now we can get to the important stuff, right? So before we get into it, I just want to make sure that everybody kinda has a thought process of what it is that I think this is about. I think it's extremely hard for any parent to make a decision on what they're gonna do this year if you don't know the plan. And you don't have an idea of what the plan might entail and you aren't able to ask questions and get clarification. Once we have that, once you hear everything, uh, Principal Griffith is gonna be talking, explaining some things. I'm sure Chris will be throwing in some things. I think then we'll, parents will be able to make some, enlightened decisions, and it's those decisions that are ultimately going to fuel what it is the school does, the district does, how the SAU handles things and stuff like that. And so I don't want anyone to think like that's that we've come to some conclusion. We have some preordained thoughts on this. Truly, I do not. Um, I think I can speak to the other two. I don't think they do either. I, and we really are interested and I want everybody to understand you are encouraged to ask as many questions as you want, follow-up questions. Stay here as long as it takes because I want to make sure that every parent feels like they have a really good understanding of what's gonna happen and are the possibility so that you can make whatever is the best decision for you and your family. So I just want to make sure people are clear about that's what the purpose is. So do you guys want to add anything?
Yeah, I think that's just about right.
Yeah, just trying to get, you know, we really wanna hear, um, the pulse of how you guys are, are feeling. There's a lot going on and in order for us to make the most informed, best decisions for, for our school and our community. Um, we what just wanna have the opportunity to, to talk to all of you and to, to listen really, you know, so that we can use that as we make, make these decisions going forward. So I echo, you know, this is the time to ask questions. And yeah, we're all here to, here to be listening ears.
Hey, Chris, uh, how do you think is best to start? Do you want to start with Suzie? Do you have something you want to say?
Uh, I'll, I'll start it out because, you know, we're, we're not gonna be here tonight to talk about anything specific for new fields. That's reserved for next week. Today is really a listen and learn on what was presented to the public at the joint board meeting on July twentieth. And we all know from Dr. Ryan's letter that went out on Saturday. The plan we, we presented, uh, or the plan of recommendations that was presented to the joint board has changed drastically since July twentieth and probably will so up until September tenth, when we are back in school with kids. That's, that's the one thing we know. And when I say back in school, it, we don't know the, the platform, right? We, uh, when we presented on July twentieth, we presented that we wanted kids in person. That we had discrepancies in masks. We had, uh, discrepancies in how busing was gonna happen, um, on, uh, AB schedules and at the middle school and high school. There was a lot to it. Um, since that time, um, we've then learned, um, and changed kind of a stance because one of, one of our, um, presentations on July twentieth was that if parents chose not to send their kids back, that they were gonna have to find an online platform of their own. And we, we suggested a possibility of Velax. That, that stance has changed drastically because we feel that if we're gonna provide an education for kids, it should be all of our kids and that we shouldn't be diverting anybody to Velax. That if, you know, parents, families choose that this is not the right time to send your children back because of fear or safety concerns or medical needs, that we should be working with all families to provide that, that option and choice, whether it's in person or if it's a remote. So that has really changed in the plan. We've been learning the labor force. Um, and you, we sent out a survey on July twenty-first, you know, um, asking how parents would want and to our staff to look at labor force because we started watching other districts Dover went, uh, went full remote on Monday. Which means that any teacher who lives in Dover will have to be, may have childcare issues for young kids at home. And they're gonna have to choose between, you know, coming to our schools to work or staying at home with young children. The Sanborn Regional School District did so last week, and there are other districts that are possible, that are contemplating that same, um, direction as we speak. Um, we'll get a, a greater update tomorrow at our, at our Southeasters meeting, which is the superintendents from the southeast of where they're at. Where a lot of our, our workforce lives, if they don't live in our SAU community. So that, that's a concern. So the, the data results from our staff will be finalized today so we can get a greater idea of how many families that, that work in our district could return or couldn't because of health issues or because of childcare or, or other issues. So there, there's been a lot that's been going into this plan. Um, when we started out, you know, at the end of, uh, you know, beginning of May, we, we put together four teams and, and we've always included, you know, our healthcare and officials to get, you know, their advice and where they're seeing this, this health pandemic going, uh, so that we can try to continue to provide, um, education with, which is most effective, but also that is the safest for all of our families and our students. So that's the, the quick synopsis to the community in a town and, you know, we, this is now the, the fifth session that we've had, uh, throughout the SAU. And, and we've wanted to really get feedback from the community on that plan. Tonight, we won't get in, in the specifics of Ms. Griffith's in her plan. I can tell you that she's been working tirelessly with her staff on how she could keep kids socially distanced within masks, you know, provide outdoor spaces. However, we're not at that position to give that to you because it's not finalized and it won't be until we continue to work through some things. Uh, right up until next Thursday, when we're scheduled to meet again. And at that time, she'll be prepared to present the plan that she's been working on with her staff and what it would look like so that families again can even make a, a greater, um, more well-informed decision based on that plan. So tonight, Tom, the, the really, the crux of it is, you know, questions that, that, that families still have, uh, on the plan presented. And again, I would ask that if, you know, they're, they're individual, um, you know, if it's a, it's a question about, you know, a specific IEP need or whatever, we'd be glad to answer that one-on-one. You know, Ms. Riss is, is on this call. You know, Ms. Griffiths is on this call. I'd be glad to answer it. But if there's questions for the community that we just haven't answered or thought about, we would, we would love to have that. And I do know that we have, you know, our, um, public health official, uh, Dr. Bobby Kelly's on this call. So he's taking information so that we can also continue to communicate with him. Also, Dr. Kristen Johnson, who are both, um, uh, parents in, in the new fields community, but they're, they're helping us drive some of these and help us understand the health decisions because like, unlike many, like, unlike Kristen and Bobby, we're not medical doctors and we need their advice and expertise to help us make these best informed decisions. So that's, that's kind of my long-winded, um, but quick synopsis of the presentations that have happened on the twentieth and up to today, Tom. And, and at that, you know, I, I would turn it over to, to anybody that has questions. If they have a question, if they put it in the chat function, you know, Tom, you can go through the chat function and we can read that question. So it's on the, on the recording. And then we can have someone from SLT, Ms. Griffiths. I'll look at Nurse, uh, Nurse Merrick as well because she's been involved with, I know with a lot of Friday calls with, uh, Dr. Chan, um, and other, uh, school nurses, you know, trying to get the most updated, uh, information. And also we're lucky. We have, um, Michelle Larson, who's our assistant in, in the finance department. If there's, you know, um, questions regarding, you know, finances. So try, we're trying to, to answer your questions tonight and those questions we can't answer, we are putting, keeping in that chat function, then we'll bring it back to the team. And that's part of what we're doing too, is collating that list so that we can go to that frequently asked question document that we have on our SAU website and update it. So with that said, Tom, I, I turn it over to you and, and see how you would like to continue to proceed, you know, once questions come into the chat function.
Sure. I got a quick question though. When, when is the SAU, when is our district expecting parents to make a hard line decision on what their plan is?
I, I think that would be right up until September tenth, Tom.
Okay. So it's gonna be kind of a floating, so, because I mean, as a parent, I could never make that decision, obviously, if I didn't have all the information in front of me. So I just didn't know if there was a drop dead date on that.
No, and, and that's the thing that we've been talking that if a parent picks in person, can they move to remote? Well, the one thing is if we only have twenty percent of our work staff coming back, we can't provide eighty percent of our, our kids coming back into our schools. We just can't do it, right? With the numbers socially distanced. So that's a no-brainer. Then that makes a decision for itself. But if we have the capability of, of to be able to edge our kids on choices from families, both remote or in person, and provide, uh, uh, education that's similar in both of those platforms, we will, we will do that. And if kids need to fluctuate because one learning environment is better than the other, we're open to that. You know, July twentieth, we weren't, and that's changed drastically in, in what we're looking at.
Hey, so we got two quick questions here off the bat. One of them is, I know Dr. Ryan's sending out another survey. Do you know when they should expect that?
I, I do not. Um, I, I know that we want to get through that data on our staff first before any other survey goes out to parents. But I, I would say that the data that comes out from our, uh, from our work staff, uh, study, uh, for the survey that we put out to our employees will, will help us understand what we would need to put in, in that, um, survey to, to the communities.
Okay. Another one had a question. Another person had a question about our next meeting because I think there's some confusion as to when that is. I think it's been scheduled for August thirteenth, correct?
Is that what? Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, six thirty?
Correct.
Yeah. And we'll do the same thing. Send it out. So get as many people as humanly possible want to come and check this out, obviously. Here's another question. Uh, what exactly is the step-down plan? If need to go to a more restrictive phase in between current plan phase and full there a link that you can send us to see the exact phase plans?
Yeah, that's part of our return to school. That is on the SAU website. There's a four-phase plan that is, uh, part of that initial plan we presented that talks about the different scenarios. When we would look to be less restrictive or when we would look to be more restrictive.
Okay. Um, I got a question while I'm waiting for another one to come in. When we come up with the original plan, is there, is there a part of it that deals with heat index in the classrooms? Is there, I'm assuming there's going to be.
Uh, that hasn't been much of the discussion at this point, Tom, but it can be something that's brought back to the, the team.
Okay. I, I would like to only because if we're gonna, if there is the possibility, it can get crazy hot in September and stuff. If we don't have the right, you know, I know. And again, I'm somewhat confused because every district's doing it differently. If we can't use AC, we can't use fans. That's how it is in my district. Per se, then it, there's gonna be times when it could be hot. So I would, I personally would like to see something along those lines taken care of. Let me get to some of these questions. Uh, so here is EHS and CMS presented proposed school schedules. But is there a proposed schedule for NES? Would the day be as normal, five days a week? I apologize. Don't worry about apologizing. Um, I, I'm gonna guess, Chris, right now there isn't a definite schedule as of yet.
Next Thursday, that will be presented.
Gotcha. I, I, if, just so we're clear, there are some questions here I think people should keep asking because it's gonna help inform Chris and Suzie what things to look for. Um, I have some other questions that I want to get thoughts on that I would like to see as part of it, and I think is important for the parents too. So believe me, anything you ask is probably gonna be worth hearing. Uh, if we, there's another question from this bishop. If we wind up going full in-person, will teachers be preparing kids to go remote so that they are better prepared for learning online? Incorporating new technology, uh, more in the person, whoop, this shifted, um, to help them in, in that regards.
It, yes. Um, part of the, the plan that we're all putting together, and one of the things that happened at the July joint board meeting was that we pushed the beginning of the start date out to, um, September tenth. And the purpose of that was to provide more professional development and training for our teachers specifically for how to teach in a remote setting, how to flip a classroom. But also there's two other key components that we definitely are aware of. And, you know, Ms. Griffiths, along with her return to school staff, um, that went through the training on July sixth and seventh. We know that students are gonna be coming back with trauma. And how do we become more trauma skilled school centers and deal with the trauma that our, all of our kids have, but also our staff? It was traumatic for many staff members and it will be when they walk back into a school building. The others, the other part that we'd be working on is empathy and, you know, how we empathize with where everybody is at in, in looking at that and understanding the different perceptions that, uh, adults and students are coming back to. So that will be kind of laid out and more in greater depth by Ms. Griffith on exactly what that's gonna look like. But those are, are two, three of the three, two, there are three things that will happen in professional development during those days, those eight days that we now have with our staff.
Okay. So the next group of questions is from Paul, and I totally get where he's coming from on this. So, um, Paul, if I don't answer this the right way for you, please clarify what you meant a little bit on one thing. So he asked, where do we stand on mask requirement for all students and staff? Okay. I know Paul has some concern over, um, the difference between a mask and a shield. And I know he sent me stuff that, uh, guidelines from CDC. So let's start there and then we'll get to his other ones. So is there a definite, uh, something from the, let's start there. There's something from the SAU about mandatory mask for kids and staff?
Yes, that was a change from the original July, July twentieth, and it was mandatory mask for all students and staff, uh, K-12.
Okay. Is there something from the SAU? Now, again, again, I'm asking, is there something from the SAU because it doesn't necessarily mean we have to do it. But is there something on the SAU about the difference between masks and shields?
No, at this point, we are, you know, still looking at, you know, um, the use of shields masks or the recommendation.
I got you. Out of E P or being a five oh four or something on that regards anyways, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and so obviously that's something Paul and others are gonna want to have some clarification on for next Thursday. Uh, he also asked about whether or not all NES teachers are planning on returning. Now, I know we can't answer that specifically, but I get his point. What he was worried about is, okay, let's say a teacher's not coming back. Now is that, is students, are students gonna be taught by a teacher that's there? Are we gonna hire a sub? And that could also affect whether or not a parent wants to have their kid attend.
It's a fantastic question, and that's why we did that labor survey with our staff.
Yep.
To see if we would be able to even run in person with a sufficient amount of staff.
Now, also though, to Paul's point, there's no guarantee it would be a substitute either because depending upon the number of kids that we had back, I can think of a thousand different configurations for the classroom itself. So it's kind of hard to even, and I get Paul's point, but it's kind of hard to even say right now until we actually definitively know who is and who isn't. Okay. Um, and then Paul had a question about temperature checks. The, correct me if I'm wrong, the SAU is, uh, answers that the parents will do the temperature checks at home as kids go, right?
That is correct. For students, they would. Um, we talked about the possibility of having staff at school. Um, but that is still, you know, something that's in discussion, but, um, recommendations for students to have those done at, at home.
Okay. And we have three temperature thermometers?
They were ordered. Um, I see Ms. Merrick smiling, so I know that they are either on their way in or, or in her office already.
Okay. Um, and I know, and I'm, again, so let's play it out in a parent's head. We, we check, I check my kid. He goes, no problem. Shouldn't the school have a method by which? Shouldn't the school have a method by which if a parent screws it up, or if a parent forgets to do it, or there's a thousand things that could happen, and a kid comes in hot, you know, should the school have a backup system? And I guess would be a way to think about it. That would be something that I think some parents would definitely be interested in knowing in the plan next week.
I want to defer that one to Kristy, if she doesn't mind answering. And I know that's been a lot of the conversation through the New Hampshire Nurses Association and some of their conversations with Dr. Chan. Kristy, if you feel comfortable, would you answer that for us?
So Dr. Chan does not, he recommends parents checking temps at home. I feel our school is smaller than most of the other schools, and I spoke with Suzie about this, and we feel that we could be able to have parents check their students at home, families check their students at home. And then as they enter, we discuss the possibility of three of us, myself, Suzie, and somebody else rechecking the students. It takes just a second, they get off the bus. It takes, you know, not even a second, and then we can, it can be a double check for parents. So I think that we could do that, we're small enough that we could be able to do that. I don't know your thoughts, Chris, about doing that, but I think, I think it might be good for some parents just to have that double check, or in case they forgot. And then we also discuss, you know, having a sticker system that, you know, Monday red sticker, little circle sticker. They've been checked, they've been screened, they're good to go. So.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that? Suzie, do you have anything you want to add to that? Oops, afraid you're mute, my dear.
Nope, Kristy covered it. We would check them, record it. If there was any issue, we would contact the parent or the emergency contact and make sure.
Okay. I think to Kristy's point, one of our greatest strengths may be our size. We can do a lot of things that a lot of schools can't, and I think anything we can do that's above and beyond to help ease some of the stress the parents are going through about keeping their kids safe, I personally think it's a good idea. So if there's a way to work that in, Kristy and Suzie, I personally would like to see it in the plan, if possible. Next question, will remote learning look like it didn't march? V-Lax is appealing because of the consistency in learning, which is something I've been hearing a lot from parents.
No, remote learning will not look the same. We were literally building the ship and trying to build instruction as, as we went. Because since we were told, March 13th, we would not be coming back, and then we had to teach in a different platform. That's what the eight days of professional development will do. I know all of our staff has been engaged in how that would happen. If there is a need or when that need arrives for us to teach remotely, it will be a system that we are pushing, you know, our students in a, in a way that they would be more familiar with. So that is on the forefront of how we would deliver instruction for all of our students, either in an in-person setting or a remote setting.
Okay, can you speak to V-Lax? Because I know I've heard tangentially that it isn't like a curriculum, it's not like, hey, there's third grade for you, it's in a can, there you go, that it's a little bit, it's not quite to that rigor.
Sure, I can only speak when I was a principal and use it. It wasn't a check-in like you would have with teachers here, since they would have students from all over New Hampshire that could be in a class, you know. So I can't speak to them at this point. I do know that there is a call with the state tomorrow and V-Lax because of the number of people at V-Lax and the waiting list that are occurring. So that's concerning that they wouldn't even be able to take students in a remote setting. So that is something that will be occurring tomorrow at the state level of, of the availability for V-Lax, since, you know, it's becoming full.
Something else that a parent, I'm going to paraphrase what the question, but it dealt with, Suzie, I'm assuming there's going to be a plan for drop-off in, for the whole drop-off procedure, especially if more parents are bringing their kids and stuff like that. I'm assuming that will be in the plan on Thursday, some discussion on that? Okay, you're shaking your head, so I'm going to go with yes. Chris, next question, will Great Bay Kids be offering aftercare?
Yeah, we're, we're still working through that. I've been reaching out to childcare centers, and they've got waiting lists, you know, much higher than they normally do at this time. And really looking at partnerships and how we can partner all of our schools in SAU 16 with our local childcare for either before, after, or, you know, that time when we have teachers returning. And kids now don't come back till September 10th, that's five extra days that parents didn't think about. So, you know, like the rec center and the YMCA have been talking about, could they do a week-long summer program for those students that would not have childcare? So we're also in discussion about, if, the biggest thing, and what we've heard from some of our healthcare officials is, it would be more prone for kids to transmit because they would be going from a place where they had a small cohort of students, and then going to a center where there might be a number of different people if it was off-site. So, you know, if there was the ability for two staff members from Great Bay to come on site, and you're only changing the two staff members, and that's the commonality with a small cohort of kids, would be a lot less risky for, for the ability for any COVID to be, to be contagious to, to groups. So still working through that, but that is definitely something that we're, we're considering.
Okay. Someone did ask, the start date for school is the 10th of September, that's it, right? That's drop dead, that's, it's not changing whether we were to go in-person or online, it's the 10th?
Correct.
Okay. Any thoughts on the use of clear screen masks for teachers?
We've been discussing all different types of masks. You know, we, we've been told that the cloth masks are the best at this point, but we have had many discussions about those students, especially in the primary grades, being able to see a teacher's lips when they're trying to work on reading fluency or phonics. And also, you know, from peer to peer because of how they may need to share. So again, that's part of the discussion, but, you know, the information presented to us is that the cloth masks are still the best. However, we are continuing to look at, is there a way that we could, you know, provide safety, which is our number one concern, but do it in a different and effective way?
Gotcha. Okay. Suzie, someone did ask that after the presentation on Thursday, would you be sending out a final format to people in hard copy or through email or something?
Yes.
Okay, there you go, you heard it there first. All right, so also another question. Could, is the school, Suzie, are you considering mixed grade classes for parents who need in-person? If we don't have the numbers? This person is in favor of it, if, if humanly possible? Let's get to that question first. Have you, is that something that's on the table or is not on the table in your mode of thinking?
That would be part of the plan that I could present on Thursday.
And I mean, clearly, that would depend on the kids that you know are coming back and how many aren't based upon the grades and stuff like that.
That's right.
But that is, I guess, pretty much everything's on the table if it means educating the kids in a certain way, and that would definitely be a possibility.
Yep, and I just want to reiterate, Tom, something that you said, which is, you know, New Fields is in a unique position because of its size. I think that we can be creative in ways that maybe other schools can't be.
I agree. Okay, Helen, I think this question's for you, my dear. Is there any plan to revisit IEPs based on the needs of the students if we were to go to remote?
Yes. We've, we've done some through the summer, and we'll continue to do it as plans develop, because that's the key to making it work for students and families is making sure.
I think she froze.
Yep, she did.
It's the best way to get those services. Am I good?
Oh yeah, you're good now. So is that something you think is going to be coming from the schools out to the parents? Or is that something the parent should be calling into the school at some point to establish, I guess?
No, it should be coming from the schools to the parents. And as soon as plans are more solidified, and we know which case managers are going to be potentially remote, and which ones are going to be available in person, then we can kind of develop how the service will be delivered to different students and, and make the plan from there.
Okay. And just so, I mean, whoever's asked, if the parents ask the question, clearly, if, there could be a lot of reasons why you don't hear. If you don't hear, just call the school.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, they'll, they'll get right to it, no, no problem at all. So the next question, I'm going to read the whole question, but this is really going to be a driving force with parents, and I get it. I'd like to hear how the school will keep kids truly socially distant, which is one way that we know reduces the spread of the virus, and how that looks. Now, they asked for lunch, but I would go so far as to say, how does that look for the day? You know, and like, and the question they ask is, will, will there be kids in a room without masks eating together? I mean, these are the sorts of things that I know is driving thought process. So I don't know if Suzie, you want to take it, or Chris, or whatever, but can somebody explain how a socially distant classroom might look?
Defer that one to Suzie, because I know that's part of their planning.
Suzie's like, yay, thanks.
Well, no, that, I'm shutting it, but that's, you know, I know that's part of the plan that she's been working on with her teachers, because it's on the forefront of everyone.
Yeah.
No guarantee we're going to do it, and I would just say that right at the beginning. However, we're going to try our best, and I think part of it's the educational piece with our kids. But I, I would, I would rely on Suzie to kind of give a little bit more if she has it at this time.
So part of what we are fortunate enough to have, and I already spoke with the teachers about this, they were gracious enough to meet. We have the space to de-intensify our numbers. So every two classroom, or every two classrooms for one class. And I, I don't want to get into too much detail because we really do need to see some more data come. But the idea is that between our indoor space and de-intensifying our numbers through classroom space, we would also spend quite a bit of time outside. We have beautiful property. We, I walked the property with Jane the other day, and clearly, there are spaces for our students to be able to be outside. So we would really take advantage of that.
You know, this question, the person who asked it, I totally get it, because, like, for example, I'll ask you this question. Is, are the teachers expected to go paperless?
Well, we would, we, we will definitely be doing quite a bit of work to prepare the students, prepare the students to be going remote so that everybody feels really organized when, when, if and when that happens. I think there will be a strong emphasis at the beginning of our time together and building relationships. And so I, so I don't know that we're going paperless, but we're being very thoughtful with how everybody has their individual resources.
No, go ahead, hon.
I was going to say, there's just, to me, there's a very big difference between the up, you know, the older children and the younger ones. Are, are, are teachers, and are you feeling confident that the young grades are going to be able to successfully, truly social distance, like kindergarten one, two?
Four, five. I think, Carla, I think that, I think that's part of, I have a, I have a meeting with our teachers on Friday, and some of these questions, you know, just like Chris said at the beginning of this meeting, I'm just taking notes. And, and I know that's probably frustrating on the parents' part for us not to have everything laid out during, during this meeting, but being able to take all this input so that we can have these kind of answers come next Thursday. But I, I completely understand where people are coming with that, from that.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you, as a teacher, like, I'm in my head going, wait a minute. I used to use whiteboards for each individual kids per class, and now I can't. Because I can't clean all the whiteboards, I can't clean all the markers. I'm not supposed to give out paper. All of a sudden, you start thinking in your head like, okay, how is this going to look? And I think as a, as a parent, I think I would want to know, like, okay, how is that going to look? I'd be curious, I also think it's fair to ask, what's it going to look like outside? Because there's not a whiteboard outside there, you know what I mean? Like, and, and if these are things we need, then the school board needs to step up and make sure you get those things you need. So I mean, it's not, I'm not looking for answers, Suzie, but like you said, these are things that I know are prevalent on, on people's minds, as they are yours. So now, this does bring, this segues to a great question from Jenny Bishop, and I'm not just saying it's Jenny's great question, because, you know, she's a friend. But has anybody from, you know, the school, the SAU, has anybody talked to any of the local daycares to get a handle on things that work there that we might be able to incorporate in our school?
I have, Tom, I've had multiple conversations, specifically with Great Bay Kids because it affects New Fields, Apple Seeds. They're still having to operate under the guidance of half, half of their students in a classroom, and that has not lightened up from the state. So they're still at half capacity. They do have their younger kids in not masks. So teachers are wearing masks, but some of their younger kids up until the age of seven are not wearing masks, and they have not had an outbreak yet. So they are outside. They've had different cleaning protocols because they have bathrooms in their, in their classrooms that they're teaching at. So there's just been more teacher involvement with the cleaning and teaching kids how to clean after using the restrooms. But they've changed a lot of protocols, but again, a lot is outside. You know, they're eating still together as a cohort, if they can eat outside, they do. But again, for both of those facilities, they have not had an outbreak in the last 10 weeks since they've been open.
Okay. So next question is from the Vernon family, how will specials be handled? Let's start there. Are, so in other words, are kids still going to be having specials during the week, stuff like that? That's still part of the plan?
I, you know, I think, I'm, I, I wish this was Thursday night because I would love to roll all this out. We absolutely, I, I want to ensure people, whether, whatever platform that we are on, we, we are looking to keep things as consistent as possible, consistent for our students, relationships consistent. You know, Tom, being an educator, that some of our students live and breathe for their specials because they love art or they're drawn to PE. And so we're going to do everything in our ability to keep things, like I said, as consistent as possible, no matter what platform we're on. It might look a little different. You know, the specialist might go into the classroom so there's not cross-contamination. But again, those are things that, that we'll roll out on Thursday.
That's fine, but it's a fair question, you know what I mean? Like, you don't have to say what it is, but you're right, you're planning on having the kids have specials, so that's good to know. Further along, they did ask, so much of our school relies on parent volunteers? And I think I already know the answer to this, Chris, but what's the policy going to be on volunteers and visitors and stuff like that to schools in the district?
Yeah, at this time, there's no volunteers or visitors at the schools.
Okay, and so their concern was, how are things like lunch and stuff like that going to get handled from the volunteers? Clearly, that's something, another issue Suzie gets to wrestle with on how she's going to figure that one out too. So.
Can I just say one thing about, is that, again, I, I think what makes New Fields so rich is part of that parent volunteer base. And I think if that base gets creative with us, and we continue some of their traditions and things that they're, that the students are used to looking forward to, you know, that will only serve us, serve us well if we can, if we can partner up and do that.
Cool. Now, the last part of this wasn't a question, but it was a comment that I should read. Additionally, not a question, just a comment, three professional development pieces in eight days for our teachers is a lot, especially because these changes are so intense. Not sure what the morale is like within our small school, but thank you to all the teachers doing all that they are doing. So that is, that should, that needed to be said. Next question, do we know amongst our teachers what the preference is in terms of coming to school or not as of right now?
It's part of that survey, Tom, so we don't have all of that data finalized yet, but we are in the process of doing that.
Gotcha.
When does the survey close again? Can you remind us?
Close today, and then we need a time to look through that data.
Okay. The next question is, uh, do we have enough Chromebooks for all our students? Are we fully one-to-one?
I'm working on that, Tom. And we're looking at, um, um, devices that, um, could help. Oh, I wish Jody would help me out on this. We're looking at, at, um, additional, um, pieces that, that, um, students would be able to write on. So we're, we're in the midst of all of that as well. So Chromebooks and the iPads for the K N one.
Suzie, there are, there are tablets that make it easier for the students to write on something like Jamboard. Rather than trying to draw or write numbers or letters with a mouse. That's, that's.
Uh, okay. Next question is from a kindergarten parent. Uh, some will be starting kindergarten. We are new to remote learning. What would that look like for working parents? Can parents work with the kids as it fits into their schedule? Does someone need to be assisting the kids with school during the traditional school hours?
Yep. We're, if, if and when we go remote, Tom, and, and, and the question to Ally, um, we're, we're still building that schedule out. And obviously we'd want to work with parents. We do, we do understand that there would be, parents are working during certain hours, uh, but that schedule is not complete yet.
Gotcha.
Hey, Tom, I have a, I have another survey, the, um, just to talk about the survey that's coming out from staff. Chris, are we going to know basically by school, the results of that, or is it just all in one big bucket?
We will know by school. We ask, e- every individual, every employee within the district. So we would have a better understanding of where we, we stood, each individual school and as an S A U.
And will we be presented with our specific schools' results or just the districts?
Uh, I'm sure between different meetings, you'll, you'll get all the data.
Uh, the next one's not so much a question, it's just something Suzie to keep in mind. I know there was, uh, this parent was definitely frustrated with the consistency of the remote. So clearly I know Chris mentioned this again. I'm sure you're feeling like a broken record, Chris. Things aren't going to be the same. We've learned a lot. I know things are going to get better. Somebody else went on to ask, uh, will there, if we go remote, will there be technology? Yes. I mean, we're not going to go remote. If we ever went remote again, kids are going to have to have the technology. And if they don't, we'll get it for them. I mean, as a school district, we would make sure that happened. I think that goes without saying. This is an interesting, good ques- uh, I, I like this question too. Has there been any consideration to each parent's, how do you use the online platforms? Prior to this possibility again?
We've had numerous conversations and I see Ms. Griffiths, you know, smiling because that is part of the things that we would need to do. In a remote setting as to how we've been looking at, we had multiple ways for parents and students to sign on. We've been streamlining that. There's, there's only one sign-on for students, no matter what application you use, which make it much easier. But also there are parents out there that, um, might not be using Zoom. Um, fortunately tonight we have 76 people who are on Zoom. But that's changed drastically since, since March. So there's other platforms too that we would, that would be part of what the school will be doing to work with parents so that they understand how to support their children the best they can.
Okay. So we have another question, which I know we can't necessarily answer, but Suzie, it goes without saying, this is something that's going to have to come out Thursday. And it revolves around lunch. And, uh, what they asked is please address the question, uh, how will lunch look if you can? I personally don't believe we can right now, but clearly on, uh, the next meeting Thursday, you know, that is a big concern for people because of the fact that to eat, you got to take your mask off and there you go. Now what do we do? So I'm sure you're going to, but clear, you know, that's not the first time it's been mentioned throughout here. Also Suzie, uh, there's going to be, there is definitely some questions about when the, when there will be mass breaks. Uh, especially for the little ones, the AK, uh, for kindergarten, one and two. Parents are concerned about what that might look like. So that's something else that, um, you're going to end up having to address. This presentation is going to last how long Suzie? Three hours when you start talking? Five hours. Oh, beautiful. No, but these are all good things. I mean, these, and these, if I had a kid in first grade, I'd be asking the same thing. Chris, has the district considered a max number of students and teachers per room?
We've been working on the premise of one teacher and ten, no more than 10 students. I know in Suzie's plan is, is in some, it's even less than that.
Cool. Okay. So here's a question. Will all S A U schools be able to function independently? For example, if one of them has to shut down, can others continue in person if that's judged to be appropriate?
Think that's great timing and I would defer that one to Dr. Ryan since he's joined us. Welcome, Dr. Ryan.
Good evening, everybody. My apologies for being late. I just came from two other meetings. We also have Stratum going on and a racial unity team meeting around education tonight. So, one of the, one of the hazards of a school district working independently is, uh, you generate an equity issue. One, within families, uh, we have within Newfields families who have children at N E S, C M S and E H S. And in the event that the secondary schools were moving in one direction and the children, and N E S moves in a different direction, that equity issue just within that family would create, uh, some, some significant issues. Another concern of ours is that we have employees who live in one district in the S A U and have children and work in another district in the S A U. And should there be something different that occurs that would create a workforce issue for us? If there isn't a, a consistent operation or plan that goes across the S A U. I questioned that when I started here a few years ago, in that in S A U 16 with seven school districts and six towns. If there are, uh, too many inches of snow in Stratum and the roads are not clear and we need to cancel school in Stratum, yet the snow is not really falling that heavily in Brentwood, what was the, what was the logic behind closing all of the schools in the S A U? And it's because of the interdependence that exists between our community schools, uh, the middle school and the high school. And so it would become highly problematic and quite divisive. If one school were to move in one direction and another district were to, um, would, would be different. Not only from a family perspective and student perspective, but also from, uh, a teaching or a paraprofessional, uh, association perspective. So it's going to be very difficult for us to, um, see or, or I would strongly recommend against a school district from moving in a different direction. However, that is always, um, at the, the board's discretion.
Well, Mr. Ryan, thanks for coming because the next two questions go to you kinda. So the next one, uh, have you guys given any thought to testing staff before they are actually, before we have kids?
So we have, actually we are working with, uh, our friends over at Exeter Hospital. Uh, I know that we have, uh, folks who work for core physicians who are on this call. We've had conversations with the Department of Health and Human Services around, um, surveillance testing, uh, which is a 10% of our staff every two weeks, um, as a means of trying to identify and locate. It's a form of tracing. However, from a testing perspective, we just had this conversation eh, uh, last Thursday where we'd like to see an increase in tests, uh, in the area. We'd like more people getting tested, which as you know, is going to create, uh, most likely a rise in the number of positive cases that are discovered because with more testing, we do show, um, usually a higher rate. So, trying to work with folks over at the hospital, uh, I know Mark Whitney is interested in assisting with this, uh, from a community perspective. I know Dr. Kelly is a public health official within Newfield, certainly Dr. Johnson, who's our consulting physician. Trying to organize, um, as part of our plan, an opportunity for not only, um, our staff members, but certainly, uh, uh, our, our students who would be entering to the school, perhaps, uh, having testing available so that we know exactly what we're working with, which could establish even better, uh, or establish in, in general contact tracing. So that we could say if we're a school in Indiana and have a positive case on the first day, be able to isolate very quickly and figure out how to reduce or eliminate that transmission from the beginning.
Okay. Uh, so you kind of already answered this, Dr. Ryan, just so you know, but, uh, the question was, so as Newfields, can we have our own plan? And I think what they're saying, and then they go on to say something else, uh, but you already addressed it like about closing schools. You have said, right now, you've said it earlier. Ultimately districts are responsible for districts and you're giving us the overall plan as to what works best. What I would say to this person is we might be able to do things that other districts can't because of our size. So it, you're giving us the outline, but we can like, hey, we can, um, temperature check every kid that walks through that door. Well, okay, that's something we can do that is different than maybe the plan in Brentwood or this or that. I can only tell this person who asked, uh, we're going to do everything humanly possible to make sure that our kids are safe. And I think in a lot of respects, we'll be able to do things differently than other districts, uh, other schools in our district because of our size. We do have some extra money that we can tap into and use. If Suzie comes up with plans that need an extra person or that or this. So ours might look a little different from other places, but Dr. Ryan is giving us the guidance to build our plan. That's how I see it. Is that close, Dr. Ryan?
It is. We're providing the general or common expectations and how they're tailored and for right down to what it looks like inside of the school during the day. Whether it's remote or otherwise, that's still entirely up to the individual district. Some consistencies, we'd like to see based on equity, but what you just described, Tom, is perfect.
Okay. Uh, this was brought up by Melissa Toby, and if anybody's lucky enough to have a kid who's been top higher, congratulations. I used to work with her. She's phenomenally good at what she does.
Agreed.
Right back at you.
You're welcome, my dear. Hey, if you worked with me for, you know, two years, God bless you, man. So. But okay, so Melissa's question is, uh, for her, it is important about the heat and humidity in the classrooms. It makes her very nervous about sending her kids in and she just wants to make sure that the no A C, no fan issue is addressed. Suzie, in the future meetings and perhaps consider some max temperature standards as well as ensuring proper, uh, and safe hydration for students and faculty. So that's just an F Y I. You know, uh, we have another question about remote learning. If there is remote, has been in consideration for to record Zoom lessons to make it easier for working parents? Is that something that's been talked about, Chris?
In, in some of the platforms in CSOW, they are recorded for the parent to go back and look at it at any time. Uh, however, in Zoom, um, we're, we're still working through making sure all of our data privacy acts are, are correct. And that we're not, um, doing anything that would go against a student or teacher's confidentiality or the agreements that we have. So, there are some that we are, are confident we can use, still researching everything such as Zoom.
Okay. So, uh, Dr. Ryan, you were Chris, this is yours. How can teach, oh, yeah. How can teachers respond to the survey about returning if they don't know the plan for their home district? Just as S A U 16 hasn't finalized plans, maybe a teacher's home district hasn't finalized plans yet. And, there we go, and, and they don't know at this time if their kids will be in person or remote.
Entirely correct. Welcome to the dance. This is why this is so incredibly complex. Because we have surrounding school districts where our teachers live, right outside of S A U 16, for instance, in Dover. Several of our families, uh, whose, uh, parents, uh, work in our S A U, live in Dover. And last night they decided to go to full remote. Just today, our middle school, uh, principal received four emails from teachers who live in Dover, who had initially indicated that they would be coming to work in school that now have to shift to remote because their young children are now going to be home. So as we in the region, uh, continue to work together as superintendents, talking through our plans, we have another meeting tomorrow morning. We've even gone so far as trying to coordinate if we move into, if we go remote, how we can coordinate grade level online learning across 12 communities in the seacoast region. So parents who have children, parents who are teachers who also have children are able to not only do their, uh, do their job from their home, but also help their own children who are learning from other school districts. So, uh, Polara has hit the nail on the head with why this is so really, really hard. It's, it, we continue to see these changes. I know Sanborn had originally moved to a hybrid, uh, their board voted for remote. We're watching Epping now with, uh, some of their unveiling last night. We're looking at S A U 21. Tom, your district, I'm not certain if, if that's going to continue to move in the direction that originally was planned. And based on the conversations we've had this past week, I don't think it will. So, um, there's so much more that is connected to our return to school. Unfortunately than just the virus. The virus is quiver, but there are so many other complex interwoven issues that we continue to meet out. We spend most of our day and night trying to, to sort through.
Well, I, I think two were questioned also though is like, you guys aren't setting a hard and fast date when teachers have to tell you either though, right? I mean.
No, we ask teachers, again, we create, this is guidance, but we ask teachers to give us their response by today so that we could have some planning to share with our joint board. In the event that we needed to do some, some updating, which we need to do some updating. Um, and so we also understand that plans change and we made that very clear when we communicated to teachers. Uh, when we asked them those questions that these plans we know can change and we actually expect them to because we have five and a half weeks between today and the first day of school. Look how much has changed in the last 10 days.
Right.
So. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, the next question is, could staff who have children in a different district who are remote temporarily, temporarily enroll in our school to keep the teachers who do want to come in person? I know some schools doing this in Massachusetts.
Uh, that's going to be a question that we're going to be asking our boards. Uh, we're not prepared to ask that yet, uh, nor ask you to take motion, uh, action on it. Uh, we'd like to talk about, um, what the implications of that would be, uh, and to see what the, um, what the level of, um, agreement that our boards would want to take, uh, with regard to that. It's not, it's not bad thinking. It's just, we want to be able to think through that because in the event that there isn't in person, um, and we have to set a limit based on the class, size of the classroom. Does a teacher's student then bump a residence student in the event that we hit a max? Those are things that we're going to have to think about.
Uh, next question is from Brooke. Are there plans to, for quarantine requirements around students who have traveled to areas with high infection rates before they may return to school?
Turn that one over to Christie. I know that was something that was discussed about, um, quarantine rates and timeout, um, through their calls on Friday. If Christie doesn't mind answering that.
Let me get my notes here from the meeting. Um, so originally it was a 14-day quarantine, um, after travel outside of New England. And he cha- he kind of changed that a little bit because he, I guess, felt a lot of teachers would be taking their children to colleges and that would become an issue. So he said that you can travel by private car. When you get out, you need a mask. If you come into contact with anyone with COVID or symptoms, you have to quarantine. If you are not good to come back to school. So I guess it's a case by case basis. I guess if you travel in a private car and you haven't been exposed, you can come back. But if you think you might have been exposed and it's a 14-day quarantine.
Is, that's what I get. I don't know if Kristen Johnson or Bobby Kelly would like to chime in on that. They might know a little bit more. Would that be okay?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm happy to chime in on that. This is Kristen Johnson. Uh, definitely going to try to follow those C D C guidelines and those continue to change as I'm sure everybody is well aware. We've seen that change, uh, you know, just prior to the, uh, joint school board meeting and prior to the meeting actually happening. Uh, and that will continue to change, but I don't see any reason why, uh, you know, whether that's Bobby or myself would advise our local school or our school district to follow something other than, um, our state and federal guidelines. But again, those are changing so rapidly that to anticipate how that would look different on the first day of school from today is certainly, uh, not something I'm willing to try to guess.
Thank you.
Does that apply to just if the child travels or would that also be if their parents travel? Because I know there are a lot of parents that have to travel for work. So it seems like.
So typically, again, this is Kristen Johnson, again, just, uh, uh, the way that that's working is that direct. Very contact. Very contact.
Oops.
You're breaking up.
Parents otherwise asymptomatic and quarantined simply due to exposure. That secondary person within the family unit would not need to quarantine. First being, or would be something that would need.
I don't know if I got all that.
Yeah, I think that was a little cut up, a lot cut up.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm with you guys on that one. Uh, Bobby, I know you're out there. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
Yeah, sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Bobby Kelly. Um, I think Kristen's probably fixing her phone. But basically what she was saying was that right now the recommendation has to do with the person who themselves traveled, not necessarily the other folks who are in, within the household, uh, in terms of the quarantine. But again, sort of exactly what Kristen was saying, the recommendations, as we learn more and more about how the virus spreads, where the prevalence, uh, is, uh, not only in your home community, but the different communities that you may be traveling to. Um, you know, right now there are, you know, quote unquote, low risk states and we happen to live in one of them, which is fantastic. Uh, but, uh, if folks are traveling to other states, then those variables are different. Uh, and then just anecdotally, uh, you know, I know what Carla was saying, that typically in traditional, a lot of people are traveling for work. But my experience has been both personally, you know, we're banned from traveling for anything related to work right now as an employee. Uh, of, although it's a healthcare system, but I know many organizations are severely limiting sort of work-related travel unless absolutely necessary. So, uh, I think this is going to be, this will be one of those pieces that we'll have to very much stay close. Uh, you know, pay close attention to, uh, what the recommendations are, when and if, you know, school starts on the tenth. And then, you know, if it changes on the eleventh and twelfth, et cetera. So I don't know that having a policy made now, uh, is going to be, you know, hold water or even ring true come September tenth. But clearly important to, to recognize and keep it on the forefront of the long list of things that the board and Susie is keeping track of. This has been great, by the way, guys.
A follow up on that, um, to Bobby, is that, does that mean that, um, if someone in your home has COVID and gets sick, that you're not likely to get it from them? Is.
That is not necessarily, uh, a, a, a correct corollary. Um, it, the, the idea is, and what Kristen was alluding to, is the recommendation for just travel to potentially higher risk areas. Uh, if you are quarantining for that particular reason, um, versus, um, having been exposed and actually having symptoms and testing positive. So those are, those are the difference in recommendations, but it's a good point, right? If you, uh, traveled to a high risk place, happened to acquire the virus, uh, but don't know it yet, you know? Which bucket do you fall into? Those are the subtleties and the, the, the real, um, uh, novelties of this virus that are keeping us quite busy in the medical world. But, um, we know a lot more about it now than we did a month ago and we're going to know a lot more in five to six weeks.
Hi, this is Kristen Johnson again. Sorry, my phone hit a little, uh, wonky switch there. But I did just want to say, I, Bobby's right on there and he and I've talked a fair amount. But I think, you know, just recognizing that, uh, you, it's sort of one degree of separation at this point. So if you are in contact with somebody that is positive, if you are exposed to a high risk area, that puts you at risk and needs to quarantine. And that's sort of where that has landed. It hasn't gone through those, you know, second cousin, third cousin type levels of, uh, interaction. And, and that certainly may change, but that's where we are right now. Certainly if the person in your family has tested positive, you then are that one step away and need to be restricted. Uh, as a practice within core, um, as a pediatric group, we really look to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. They've done a really nice job over a number of years of really trying to put in place some very clear protocols to follow that are very evidence-based. And while it makes me a little sad to say that I worry about the C D C, uh, and how that may have some political slant to it now, um, I think that we're fortunate that the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, from a pediatric perspective, has done a really nice job of staying as focused on data and, uh, least biased of anything I've seen out there. So, uh, that's something that I've continued to recommend to the district to follow, uh, as we are looking to, uh, to continue to feel out who should be there and who shouldn't, and to try to find an unbiased, uh, folks, uh, group of folks to follow.
Okay, thank you. Um, so next question, Susie, this is going out to you and I know you do not have an answer yet. I, but something else to consider, someone has asked, hey, uh, if a student is found to have a high temp during the school day, uh, is it assumed to be COVID nineteen? What is the protocol to notify everyone? How does testing for high temp student take place to ensure it is, it's if it's not, or if it's just a cold? Clearly part of what we're going to talk about on Thursday is going to address all that, I'm assuming. Okay, so future rabbit holes, okay, that I know we're going to go down. Cause as I think of it, all of a sudden I go, hey, how are we handling the bathrooms? How are we handling the teachers bathrooms? Are we cleaning in between? Like all those thoughts go through my head and I'm sure it goes through the parents too. Um, is that something else? I mean, this list, you, I do not envy you, my friend, because it, it is, it's that constant buildup of what's next sort of thing. I'm assuming these are things that you have in your list of things. Oh, okay. Um, and so for the people asked the question, I, I, we, we all hear what you're saying. I just know that those are things she can't even answer right now, but she will on Thursday. Um, uh, does anybody know this question? Uh, are the HVAC systems being updated with HIPAA filters?
Mr. Lister did an audit with, uh, your head custodian Kurt. Um, your air ventilation system is, um, due to the new HVAC we got in boiler last year up to current and exceeding code. Um, so there was not a recommendation for anything further through Mr. Lister's office at this time.
Okay, so just so I guess, I, I'm guessing this is what the person would then ask. So we, we don't need them because what we got is doing as good of a job without them as it would with them.
There was no recommendation for any further upgrades through the facilities department and Mr. Lister.
Okay. Uh, the next question was about what's busing going to look like? And you want me to answer for it because we don't know, because we don't know who's coming and who's going, right? Susie, am I close? Okay, so. To this point though, um, I think it's ridiculously important that, you know, this is where the parents of our town are going to really drive how all of this plays out. Um, when, as we know as a district here, what's going on with the busing? Then we know, Susie will know whether there's a busing problem. I will tell you my personal opinion, which is we should not be doing all these things and then cramming kids on a bus to bring them to school when cramming them on the bus is negating all the things we're trying. Um, and I know I've talked about this with, uh, Susie privately. You know, if, if enough parents can bring their kids, that does reduce the number of kids on the bus, allows us to adequately space them, all of a sudden that problem is not a problem. But if it is, then it's going to be up to the board to help Susie come up with a plan. And if that means we got to put money towards a different type of more buses, whatever, then we might have to do something. I, I don't know, because I don't even know if it's a problem yet. But we're not going to do all this and then have busing not be safe. In my personal opinion, that just won't happen. Carla, Jane, what do you guys think about it?
Yeah. Busing, I think that if we can't find a safe way to transport our kids, then we're not doing our due diligence. So I think you're absolutely right, Tom. If we can't, if we're doing all this to keep our school safe and we can't get our kids to school safe, then we'll need to read, readjust our thinking.
Yeah, I mean, my main focus is on where I can see a guarantee of safety.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. Uh, the next question is half day kindergarten under consideration?
Everything's under consideration at this point, Tom. Literally.
That may be the understatement of the meeting, you know? I know. And I, and I know it's frustrating too, because that's how you have to think of it, because everything is changing.
What would be some of the considerations to, um, conduct half day that you're looking at? Would, 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 would be that trigger to say, okay, yeah, we should go to half day or not?
Um, I, I, I'll give my answer, but I know Susie will give a better answer as she lives it every day. Um, but we look at, you know, the needs of the students, you know, and we've had full day kindergarten because we feel that that, that type of environment, that time is the best for, for all students in kindergarten to continue to progress down an educational path. Um, but there might be social emotional needs or other educational needs where a half day program might fit better for that child or, or set of, of students. So again, it would be really individually based. Um, or if we hear a number of, of, uh, uh, parents are concerned about the length of a school day for their children, that would be something we would take under consideration. That's why I said everything is under consideration, but that's our goal is that we would get into, you know, uh, a system that we feel where we can push our students through the length of day that we currently have at all levels.
Okay.
Susie, please add if, if, if you need to.
I just want to echo what Chris has to say as far as, you know, a, and what Carla has to say as far as our first and foremost is, is to make sure that the students are safe. Um, and we will do that. Um, and, and then really thinking creatively and outside the box. Again, I, I am just so pleased, um, with the faculty and staff and how they've rallied and tried to help me, um, come up with creative ways, um, to uh, de-intensify numbers. Um, if half day is something that, uh, we want to consider and it makes sense for our students in new fields, then we will absolutely put that on the table.
Okay, uh, Chris, if we end up, uh, if Great Bay ends up being part of this, is the S A U having a protocol for their people being tested? Is there something in the, you know what I mean? Is that something we would, we would look into?
Yeah, if it's determined that they would do before and after school care, we'd have some type of agreement of, of what the, our safety guidelines are as they're using our building. Um, and, and I know that their, uh, protocol for staff and students right now, their testing, um, and their cleaning protocol is, is, because they've been open for ten weeks is, is, you know, better than most at this point. They've learned the ins and outs of it. So again, it would be a partnership and we'd, we'd have certain stipulations for anybody that would be providing before or after school care.
Okay, uh, and a couple of people have come in late and so I know they're asking questions that have been asked. But to the person who asked about Thursday, yes, uh, Thursday, you're going to get some definitive plans and definitive details about all these things that we're bringing up tonight. Um, so if you can tune in next Thursday, you will get answers more specific than what you're getting tonight. Um, and then the next person asked about what happens when a child is sent home. We've kind of addressed that already, that that will be coming out Thursday, um, to deal with kids who come with a fever and stuff like that. Uh, and hey, Chris, here's a question about has, has there been consideration for a staggered schedule? A couple of days in the building, a couple of days out, and to quote you, everything is on the table. Correct?
We've looked at that through our subcommittees and also I know that Susie's looking at, again, how do we keep all of our kids and staff safe? So that, that has been looked at, will be looked at, continue to be looked at and for the next five and a half weeks.
Okay, uh, let me see. Okay, the next question, whoops. Okay, so just some comments right now. Um. Okay, so I think I've, so far, I don't see any question that I have missed. The end of my list here seems to be, mostly just comments, um, some very nice ones, by the way. Thank you to the board. Um.
I think, uh, Bobby, Bobby asked a question about, is it going to be recorded next Thursday? Did, did you say that? I must have missed it.
All, all of our Zoom meetings are recorded and then are put back up on the website, uh, within a week. Um, and we're trying to expedite that process as we know that this is a hot topic and parents want to know. So our goal is to have it up in the next, next day, um, for all of our meetings. And as I said, because so many questions were asked in the chat function, we'll also make that available for people to view so they can see the different questions that were asked throughout this meeting.
Awesome.
Uh, the next thing I'm going to read is just a comment from somebody. Um, this is the downside of not meeting in person where it'd be so much better. People could just say what they want to say and so that's why I don't want to miss anything. Uh, this may have been brought up before, but I feel it's incredibly important. Is there a plan for monitoring how remote teaching looks across N E S teachers? Think we can all agree that we need to plan for remote learning to happen. I know that teachers did their best in the spring when they had to suddenly teach remotely, but there were wild discrepancies in how teaching and learning was happening. I hope there is a plan or a team to ensure that there is consistency in teaching, teaching lessons, grade appropriate learning time, et cetera. Uh, Susie, I mean, this comment the person's making, um, this isn't the first time you've heard it, I'm assuming.
I am. I, I want to ensure all of you who are on this call, I think that you'll be very pleased with our approach to making, um, any type of remote learning a partnership with the parents and as easy as possible. Because, um, there, you know, we want to, we want to come at this as organized and, um, simplistic as possible, because we know that people are going to be working. They're going to have a ton of other things on their plate. Some people are going to be able to work side by side with their student if we go remote. Some people are going to have to do things at night if they work during the day. Some people are going to have to do it on the weekends. And so from that lens and from that paradigm, we are going to make things simplistic, consistent across K through five. Uh, we're already looking at the platforms that we are going to use. We're not going to have seventeen different options. We're going to have a few so that you know it's a, if a, it's a this or that. Um, and again, a meeting with our faculty, uh, this Friday to kind of solidify some of that. But I do, I, I do feel as though I can ensure you that, um, it, it will be, um, systematic across the board. I too am a parent, I too experienced, I have three children in three different places and I experienced some of that as far as, um, lots of discrepancy and it, it was frustrating. So I do not want, um, that to happen to us. And, and again, I will ensure, uh, that it won't happen for, for us.
Hey, thank you much. Uh, the next question, I, Susie, I'll throw this out to you or Chris. I don't think this is something you guys have been able to do. Um, there are definitely quarantine bubbles where some of our kids have been together since the beginning. Is that being taken into account for keeping those kids who are already exposed to each other together in the classroom? May help with social distancing concerns. Um. I, I don't see how you guys would even know, to be honest with you. So I don't even know if that's something you guys are even considering.
Thank you. Answered it for us, Tom.
Yeah, I think, I, it, part of our size may actually be, be part of what's going to naturally occur anyways. But yeah, that would be a variable that I can see would be very hard. It would make sense, I get it, but I think it would be very hard to implement.
I suppose.
Texting, texting. Um, you got a more.
Okay, I suppose if, if it is a remote model, you could keep those bubbles and then.
There you go.
Right?
Yeah. Um, okay, so right now I haven't had any new questions or comments at this moment. Um. Oh, uh, so there was, there's a question that's totally, it's a little bit off from this. But where did N E S land on our school counselor for the, this coming school year? We, as a board, decided to hold off on hiring a new counselor for this year because we were afraid we would be in a bind monetarily in case we needed things. At the time, there was talks of, uh, needing P P E and stuff like that, so we didn't. It is something that we have said that we're going to definitely look into for the next budget.
Tom, I think, I think they're talking about whether we were going to go full time or part time, uh, but we have.
Yeah, we were looking at Tracy, remember?
Right.
And we, we, we upped her to point six.
Point six instead of full time. I know we agreed not to go full time.
Yeah, correct.
We upped her from half time to point six.
Yeah, so Tracy Alward is the new school counselor. Um, so she has been working with Mrs. Eskeland. Um, and she's going to be starting in the new school year and the kids should be familiar with her. Um, so that shouldn't be, there should be some consistency there, but she has been, um, I think Mrs. Eskeland was at point five and we upped, upped her to point six. She has a little bit more time in new fields than Mrs. Eskeland did, which is what we, we were hoping to, uh, to get a little bit more of. But what Tom is referring to is, um, we'd had a request to go to have a, a full-time counselor. And that's what we're going to hold off on until we have a good indication that we are going to, um, Need it just because our budgets are so tight and we don't have a lot of extra money to spend. Is that right, Tom?
Yeah, no, without a doubt. I mean, it's not, none of us was against the idea of a full time one. It was problematic, given what we didn't know financially. We might run into with the startup of the school year. That was the main reason in the grand scheme of things why we decided not to.
Exactly.
Here's a, here's a comment, question. Does the school board understand the that many parents both? Work out of the house and educating the kids at home would not be an option for parents due to being essential employee. Anybody want, I mean, anybody can answer that one because I think we're all in the same boat on this.
Yeah, we we definitely understand that, Tom, and that's been part of our discussions and we we've taken that in consideration. Absolutely.
From a personal standpoint, I can honestly say I feel incredibly bad for all and heartfelt for all the parents. Who have to try to do both things. My kids are at the point where I don't have to help them in their education. I have it easy. I know how much of a struggle it can be and how hard it can be and then just you have to go to work. So yeah, I totally get that.
Tom, I'm seeing one last comment in there and I and I know that there's been some questions. I'm just wondering if there's nothing that's new, if we can get to a point where we're going to kind of put the public session to close as. You know, this is day three of of these meetings. I just wanted.
You know, I told you here, I just want to give a, I'm gonna give a couple more. Has a specific question to. That they want to ask about the whole reopening and stuff like that. And if not, some of these I can definitely get to towards the end too. So that's not a problem. I guess the one thing, Chris, we didn't get to was the MOA.
Oh, and before we hop to that, Tom, I just, I was wondering if maybe we could just give parents one more summary of the next meetings that are coming up just one more time so that everyone can have an opportunity. Write them down. The purpose of the meet, so when they're coming up, the purpose of the meeting. And then also, I know you had mentioned a survey went out to teachers, not quite sure when the survey is coming out to parents. Is that correct?
Yeah, as I said earlier, Carla, that we're going to look through that data from the from the teachers and then if we need to create one for for parents, we would definitely do that. After we look through the data tomorrow morning.
So I would love before our meeting next Thursday to have had a survey go out to our parents. I don't know if the rest of the board would feel that it would be nice for us to just get after this meeting. Kind of a take on how how everyone's feeling for our next meeting. Do you guys have opinions on that?
Well, the only, the way I see it, though, Carla, the only problem is we didn't really give the parents anything where they could say tonight, here's my decision. And realistically, that's going to be Thursday. So on Thursday at six thirty, we'll have another meeting at that point in time.
Yep.
These questions that were asked by everybody where you wanted specifics on lunch and specifics on heat index and specifics on. Bathrooms and what does the classroom look like? Like that's when that's getting answered. Now, after that.
Yep.
Yeah, I think then they can answer any survey. I'm sure after that, Chris and the SAU is going to want, they're going to send something out. Also, because they're going to want to know and parents can then start to make some informed decisions.
Absolutely.
That's the only reason I'd hold off because if I was a parent, I couldn't answer anything right now.
Okay. Sounds good.
So.
So what were those? What were just the next? It was just next Thursday and that's NES focused?
Next Thursday is NES focused planning discussion with the community.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
All right.
And all the details are on the website, the SAU sixteen website.
Correct.
Does the, did did we send that one, Chris, to all the parents on how to get into this Zoom meeting?
It was put on the Newfields website, the Zoom was there. So the seventy parents or participants would have gone on to the board part and the Zoom link was was created and linked there.
Okay, is it possible, Suzie, to send it out to everybody directly in an email or Chris? So.
Jane Johnson did send it out to all of the parents earlier this week, I believe, which I received as a parent. I don't know if you did, Carla. If we ask her to do that again, if we can make sure that she's including the potentially incoming kindergarteners.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I received one. But I did see that some of the kindergartner parents may not have gotten them, so.
Yeah, and Suzie, there is a question about putting it on the NES Facebook page. Is that something that you can facilitate? Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely want to get out to as many people as humanly possible, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Okay, Carla, do you feel good like we addressed that?
Yeah, just so long as we have like next dates, purpose of the meeting, just so, you know, it seemed like there was a little confusion about that. So I wanted to add the clarity.
Cool. Okay. So can we move on to the MOA? Everybody cool with that?
Yep, as long, if other questions come up, as we're talking, we should probably re-circle back to those.
That's fine. Alrighty, so is Tom still here? Yes?
Yes.
Can we, after all that, can we have, can you just remind me one more time, MOA? I know we started there, but.
Yeah, last meeting, when we talked about on July twentieth, you know, Dr. Ryan and Dr. Campbell started the initial conversations with a lot of the of the ten different organizations. And there was some discussion of how you wanted to be involved. So we wanted to circle back. Would you like Dr. Ryan and Dr. Campbell to continue those conversations? You know, what role do you as a board want to play? So I think it's important to hear from from Dr. Campbell and Dr. Ryan where they're at and give you some updates and then. Then make a decision if you want to continue with the path that they're working on, or if there's something different that Newfields would would want to do. So I put it over to Dr. Campbell and kind of talk about how you've been going and and what's been working well and gather that input.
Thanks, Chris. So as you know, we had sent up, both David and I had spent a long afternoon reviewing the two proposals. From our association on behalf of all of our collective bargaining agreements. David and I ran through those and looked at each of the items in both of those proposed MOAs. We provided comments to you. I think this is a public meeting, so we don't. About what's contained in those MOAs. That would be, that would be a different conversation in what would be a non-meeting. But in terms of moving forward, we wanted to provide you our thinking in response to the drafts that we reviewed. And how do you want to proceed? What is your, you know, what do you want to see as the next steps? David and I are hoping, and it's our recommendation, that we have one MOA for both working conditions and health and safety. For all of our districts, but that is a individual decision by the board. So we're just looking for direction from you. In terms of what you would like to see as next steps in the process of negotiating an MOA.
Personally, don't have an issue with you guys taking control of it and doing it at all. I guess my question is. If other towns are sending people and other towns aren't, does that muddy the whole MOA completion?
So I think, you know, we had this conversation a little bit earlier today. There is a one district that would like to have two representatives from their board. Not participate directly in the actual negotiations, but to be there as advisory. So I I think the same could hold true for Newfields and for all of our other districts. Both David and I. Would be deliberate in our communication back to the entire joint board about where things are at, what has been discussed, what our recommendation is. So. I don't, I don't know that you need to specifically have people available. Our plan is to report back to all of you. In terms of the progress that we've made and where we're at and to continue to seek your guidance and your input. As to what you would like to see in an agreement for our teachers and our paraeducators.
Guys, what do you guys think?
It's a tough one because there's so much that's going on right now. It's hard to. Knowing Newfields is so small and knowing how nimble that we can be. It's really difficult to make this kind of like a definitive decision. I think if, I would like to ask, you know, Dr. Campbell, is, you know, what's the. When are the meetings take place? Would it be, I mean, I I think I would like to have an advisory. Maybe presence there, but I I know that I am a working parent, so if it's going to be something that is going to be. Taking away from that, I want to make sure to have that at least. Feedback so that when it comes back to our boards, we can go ahead and say yay.
Jane, good, good question. We don't have a set schedule at this point. I think one of the. First things that we need to sort of decide as an SAU, what is the exact plan for return to school? So that's a fundamental question. That we need or our boards need to decide before we can then sit down and actually negotiate an MOA because if it is. Return to school, you know, all the students in the classroom, that is one thing. If it's complete remote learning, that can be another thing. So I think. Sort of sequencing, this is important. So I think boards will need to make some decision or some indication as to. What they are planning to do in their district and that will then provide Dr. Ryan and I the opportunity to then specifically negotiate. What those circumstances are.
No, what if those circumstances throughout the course of the school year change? And I'm assuming that they most likely will. So that is taken into consideration within that negotiation process, correct?
Yeah, if we, if our, let's just say, for example, all of our districts are returning to school. And we craft an MOA for a return and then later in the year or the fall, we have to go to a remote. We would need to sit down again with the association and look at potentially a new MOA. So if there are conditions that change. We would have to respond to the changing conditions and sit down and and engage in a conversation with the association.
Okay, what happens to the kids when that negotiation is ongoing during the midst of a school year?
You know, we would work, I I think our goal would be to try to accomplish those either simultaneously. If we had, you know, indication ahead of time, it'll be a, I think the timing will be really critical. I think all of our associations will. Understand that and appreciate that and come to the table quickly to get it resolved. So I I think timing is everything. And we will work very hard to make sure that they are happening as simultaneously as possible.
So you're not expecting any disruption to, you know, school days, things along those lines while this MOA gets renegotiated potentially?
I see David's hands raised. I don't see disruption to the plan that we agree upon. The plan might get disrupted based on what is happening in the COVID world, but I don't see sort of the conversations with the union. Having a negative impact on the day for the student.
Okay, great. That's, I really want to make sure that we have as much continuity as possible. So that, thank you. That 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 helps a lot. David, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to add a comment, Jane, that we have the luxury of having the experience of negotiating the MOA. Tom and I, back in the middle of April, which, as you recall, was about a month after. We moved onto a remote platform when we recognized, based on the governor's order, that we were going to remain. Close for the remainder of the school year, our buildings would be closed. We began negotiating with the MOA with the and the joint chairs, keeping the joint chairs informed of that MOA. So having gone through. The experience once with all ten professional associations in it, in a unified agreement and not having any disruption to the school day. That would be the good faith work that we do with the the associations moving forward into this year. That is, is not a concern for us. It's not been a concern expressed by any of the association leadership or the UNISERV director. We're very confident, based on the collaborative nature of our relationship with the associations, that we're going to be successful in moving forward with. An agreement, but also within that agreement is some some language that most likely would signal what would happen if there was a change in. The conditions around us necessitating one way or the other. So just to to help allay those fears that. You know, there is no anticipation of any disruption of school as as a as a result of a negotiation of an MOA.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hey, guys, just quick question. I I'm perfectly fine with you guys doing it. What somewhat, I don't know, worries the word I juice. If I got another district there chirping in your ear about something they want. That may not be what we want. You know what I mean? Like, that's the only reason I would send somebody or even want to send somebody like. This advisory stuff, like how much input are they having? Or you know what I mean? Like, I guess that's my concern. I got to worry about what another district might want that might affect our teachers. You know what I mean?
So the advisory nature is Tom and I literally or figuratively at the table with. Those bargaining on that other side. And then the components of that, bringing it back to all of our boards and getting. Feedback from all of our boards. So if there's one particular board. That's advising in one direction, that's going to be shared with all of our boards because our goal is, again, to have one agreement. And eliminate the potential for divisiveness within our employees and our employee unions. So that's not, Newfields isn't going to get left in the dark, Tom. If anything, you're going to be as well.
I don't think that's what I was thinking. I wasn't at all. I I'll put it to you this way nicely. I know there are other. Towns in our district who do not think the same way as our school board or other school boards. I just want to make sure that that line of thinking isn't getting in the way of stuff that we need as a district or that we need for us. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
And and our goal again, just as we did in the spring. We can only be as clear in our communication as possible with you and ensuring that your your feedback is weighed equally. With all those other boards' feedback.
Okay. Personally, guys, would like to not send anybody and because I think. I think it sends a weird message. It almost sends like we don't think we don't, I mean, I have utter confidence in these guys. I think by not sending anybody, we're sending the message that we have confidence in Dr. Ryan and Tom to take care of the business and get back to us and tell us. And in the end, we're all going to vote on it anyways.
And it's going to be your signature. We don't have the authority, legal or otherwise, to sign any type of work agreement. It's the board's acceptance and signature.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So if it's, if it's our, if it ends up on our doorstep anyway, then yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Chris, I don't think we had anything else, do we? On the list?
I didn't see anything new, Tom.
Okay, we haven't really had any other comments. There was, I do know that we and we've addressed this, believe me, but. Just to further hit the nail on the head, we want to make sure we get out next week's meeting to as many different platforms as humanly possible. You know what I mean? Emails, Facebook, whatever. Get it out there so that we make sure people can't say they didn't know.
Heard you loud and clear.
I know, I know, but you gotta say it again, baby. You know.
We will make sure it goes out through every every platform.
How it works.
Yeah, every platform and as many of the incoming and new students in different grades as possible, if that's at all feasible.
Yep. And there was one question actually that came in about that, that said they just moved into the district. So are they automatically found? How how do they get on the list?
Yeah, I I did ask that person if privately, you know, they signed up, stuff like that. So it's good. They have, they have the email. And when you're new to a town, like they were wondering if things get sent to them. Do they have to look it up? It is sometimes daunting as to how the. Information system works. So I made sure that they're set. But yeah, I just don't want anyone to think that we are not trying to be as transparent as humanly possible. I think the district is trying to be as transparent as humanly possible. Dr. Ryan, I appreciate everything you guys are doing, you know, you and your staff. It's this, it's got to be one of the hardest things I can imagine having to deal with. You know, for you and all the guys, Helen, everybody, it's hard. I get it.
Yep. Yep, thank you, Tom.
Does anybody got anything else before we? Does anybody got anything else before we call it a night?
Just thank you to all the parents for, you know, being here and being involved and asking these wonderful questions. Welcome to new parents. So yeah, I just, I love that we live in a community that, you know, cares this much about, you know, each other and their kids and and the school. And that, that's what makes New Fields so special.
Yeah, that's a, I can't echo that enough. Chris, if somebody has questions that they didn't think of or wanted to be able to ask after this, you know, what would be that forum? Would they send something to you?
And send something to myself, Suzie, you know, anybody on the senior leadership team would be glad to talk with them or respond to them one on one.
Chris, are you going to be saving the chat?
I am. I'll save both the the video and the chat, and both of those will go up.
All right, so we'll make sure our FAQ doc on the SAU page, we update with any new questions that have been answered tonight, like we've done with our other listening sessions. So the people can find that information there as well.
All right, just need a motion, gang. Hit the road.
I'll put a motion into.
Longer meetings, you know?
Hey, I'm up for it. I was expecting this to go way longer and listen for for harder, so I'm, I appreciate it. But I'll put a motion into Jern.
I'll go second. I think it's done a lot of seconding tonight, so why not?
All in favor. Alrighty, guys. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Later.